3:46 has arrived and I'd like to call the Kane County Board Meeting of March 22, 2022 to order.
Wallace.
Could you please call the roll?
Okay. Ellen?
Ellen, present.
Bates?
Bates, present.
Berman?
Berman here.
Brown?
Brown here.
Davist?
Davist here.
Ford? Mr. Ford? Braz?
Here.
Gums?
Gums here.
Iqbal?
Iqbal, present.
Kenyon? Kenyon, okay. Mr. Kias?
Excuse me.
Copie?
Copie here.
Thank you. Leonard?
Leonard here.
Louis?
Louis here.
Martin?
Martin, present.
Molina?
Molina, present.
Sanchez?
Sanchez here.
Sheppra?
Sheppra, present.
Silva?
Silva's here.
Strathman?
Strathman here.
Surges?
Surges here.
Teppe? Wallace?
Wallace here.
Anne Winicki?
Present.
You have eight quorum. Okay.
Kenyon checked in too late.
Hey. Oh.
He's here.
Don't be worried. I was just gonna call you.
Welcome.
Good.
Alrighty. So we're only missing Mr. Ford. Mr. Ford? Got here? Okay, very good. All right. Ms. Strathman, why don't you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
There is no invocation today, but I hope you all have courage and the foresight to be very considerate of your potential decisions you're gonna be making. Courage the fact that whatever decision you make is not for you. It is for the impact of the residents of our county. And this is truly the case of what decisions we'll be making later on during this discussion. There are no minutes. Is there any public comment? Done? All right. It is my turn now to have a presentation, my comments, but I'm going to move those and they'll be very brief because I want to get into the discussion, which is, I think, the reason why we're all here. But I'd like to bring up Beth Rundle, who is going to talk a little bit about youth preparedness through Office of Emergency Management. These are classes. Correct?
I'm just gonna stand here in support of her.
Go ahead, Beth. Have at it.
Does she need your support?
Just real briefly, I think she's a little bit nervous about this, but it's important to point out that Beth is a longtime member of our Office of Emergency Management and she really helped us carry the county through the pandemic with all of her service to OEM, working 12, 16-plus hour days and serving at the vaccination clinic as well. So I am proud to introduce Beth Rundle.
And I wasn't nervous until he walked up here. Okay, great. All right. So I want to thank you for inviting me to come originally to do this today because this youth preparedness stuff is very important to me. So being prepared empowers children to become leaders at home, in their schools, and in their communities. The population of children in the United States is 25% of the population in Kane County. That adds up to be about 130,000 kids in Kane County. So when I begin teaching the kids those classes, I ask them the definition of an emergency and a disaster. So every single class, when I ask about emergencies, in every class, they say tsunami first. So then I have to bring them back to what kind of emergencies can happen in Kane County or in Illinois. So that's one of the things that I do. So teaching kids preparedness helps them to gain a sense of understanding and control so that they are equipped to respond more quickly and safely in a crisis. These days, kids are coming home from school by themselves at a younger age and staying home by themselves at younger ages. And then some of them are also babysitting for other children. And some kids in this county and all over the United States, all over the world, kids sometimes are the most responsible people in the house. So, and with the emergencies at schools, that can happen at schools. I want to teach kids how to be prepared because I really do feel like if they are prepared, they are empowered to be able to help themselves, their families, and even their teachers in a classroom. So some of the things that I teach are house fires. We talk about house fires. And if your house is on fire and you're trapped in your room, some of the things that you're going to do to keep yourself safe and get yourself out of that situation. We talk about winter storms because we have winter storms here. And I talk to them about the, how they are gonna dress when they're outside, going outside. And then we also talk about heat emergencies. And during those times that I talk about heat emergencies, I talk about water safety because a lot of kids have pools now. So I talk about never swimming by yourself and, you know, things like that. So the other thing we talk about is thunderstorms, tornadoes, emergency sirens, and safe places. So if there's a thunderstorm or a tornado, where are you gonna go in your house? And most of them will say the basements, but I talk to them because there's kids in the room that don't have basements and where else they might go in their house in those situations. I also talk about calling 911. So I want the kids to understand when they, when and if they have to call 911, what that operator is going to say to them on the other end and the stuff that they are going to know, need to know when they call. I find that a lot of kids don't even know their own home address. So I send them home with homework and tell them that they need to learn their home address just in case they have to call 911. And they also need to know their address of their school. Because if they're in a classroom and that child needs to call 911 from that classroom, they need to know where the address is for that school. And then I do a little bit of first aid. I'm a first aid and CPR trainer. And so I do a little bit of first aid. And the only first aid that I do is stop the bleed. So I teach them how to do a pressure bandage because we know that more people die from bleeding than they do from a lot of other things. So we, I teach them how to do that. And then at the end of each class, oh, I talk about helpers. That's important to me and I'll get a little bit to that a little bit. But I talk to them about who their helpers are out there. I talk about firefighters. I show them a picture of a firefighter all dressed in their gear as they come into a house to assure them that that person coming in their house dressed like that is not someone you're afraid of. That person is there to help you. I show them pictures of police officers. I took a picture of this guy, put it in my PowerPoint. I also am working on getting one of our nine canines in that PowerPoint too. And because I want them to know that a lot of times in an emergency, even in a fire, the first person to get there is not a firefighter because they're getting in their, all their gear, they're getting into a fire truck and driving there. It's gonna be a police officer that gets there before that firefighter normally. So I want them to trust that fire, that police officer. Unfortunately, these days, there are some negative in the news and things and kids are learning not to trust police officers. And I want to assure them and teach them that that person is a helper. So at the end of each class, they get a go-bag. So these are go-bags and these go-bags, the bag itself was purchased by Kane County Emergency Management and some of the things in there. Because I teach them first aid and a little bit of first aid, they also get a first aid kit. And I'm thankful to the sheriff, he purchased 300 first aid kits for me. He asked me how many kids I wanted to teach during that year and I said 300. In less than three months, I have done over 300 kids. I went to Mooseheart and was able to go in there and do every, do preparedness for every student at Mooseheart. And I went to a Catholic, I mean, a Catholic school in Hampshire. They invited me out to do every single classroom there and teach the kids preparedness there. So every kid gets a go-bag, okay, when they, when they leave there. So if we had more time, I'd go through some of the fun things that are in there. But that's a go-bag that every kid gets. And I think that this becomes a security blanket. So once you've taught them about evacuating their houses, if they have to do that, and they have this bag to take with them and the stuff that's in there are the things that they need when they leave, it's kind of like a security blanket to them. So everybody gets one of those. So I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about kids say the darnedest things. So in these... Okay, so in my very first class at the sheriff's office, I asked the kids, I tell the kids that they can ask me any question, that I'm gonna take the time to answer their questions. I build enough time into this, in these classes so that I can answer questions. The very first question at my first class at the sheriff's office was a fourth grade boy who raised his hand. The first thing he asked me, who is in charge here today? I said I was in charge today. And then he asked me, I was in this uniform, he asked me if I was the kind of police officer that shoots black people. And I have six children of my own and am really good at responding quickly to things like that. And so I responded to him that that in every profession out there, there are people who do bad things. There are doctors and nurses and teachers and kids and parents that do bad things. There are police officers that do the same thing. I asked him what grade he was in and he said he was in fourth grade. And I said, how would you, I said, is there a kid in your class that misbehaves in your classroom? He said, yes, all the time. He told me his name was Charlie. So he said, Charlie, he's always in trouble. And I said, how would you feel if the whole world judged you as a fourth grader based on the behavior of that one child? And he started crying and he said he did not want that to happen. And so we hugged it out in the end. And after every class, I have the parents come back in and I send the kids off for a tour of the police department. And then I tell the parents and I talk to the parents about this situation because I'm sure all the, some of the kids were gonna come back and say, there was a kid who asked in the class if she was the kind of person that shoots black people. So when I told them how I responded to that, the parents started crying in the room. And the mom, I didn't know whose kid this was because I didn't want to point out a kid and I didn't want to point out a parent. A mom raised her hand and said, was that my child? And it was her child. So she hugged me after and thanked me for responding that way and come to find out that child's dad is in jail. So that's why he responded, you know, that way in that situation. The other situation we had is we teach parent, we teach adult classes too. We teach adults to be prepared. In one of our classes that we did, a parent at the end raised their hand with a question. And what they said is that that girl there taught my kid preparedness. My kid was in her preparedness class. I tell them that everything in this bag is emergency equipment. Nothing in here is toys. There's a flashlight in here. There's a whistle in here. Parents love the whistle. There's a whistle in here. I tell them that these are emergency equipment. If they take these out of the bag and play with them and they're around the house, is this emergency equipment anymore? And they all say no. And I asked them if they can be responsible with this emergency equipment. So it's available if in an emergency or disaster, they need to take their go-bag with them. So this kid came down for breakfast and all of a sudden, as he's leaving, he goes, Mom, I need a flashlight for school today. And mom said, well, go open your go-bag and get the flashlight. And he said, I can't. If I take it out of there and I forget it at school, it's no longer emergency equipment. And so that made me feel good that they understood that the importance of this bag at the end of their class and reinforces in me why I want to give these go-bags, keep giving these go-bags out. So what's next in this program? There's 130,000 kids in this county. If I could reach 130,000 kids, I would love to be able to do that. I feel like if we can teach these kids preparedness and teach the adults in this community preparedness and see the importance of preparedness, that we're gonna save lives. And it's gonna lessen the effect of an emergency or a disaster in people's homes and then people's communities if they can take care of themselves and have what they need as far as kits and things in their home. Everybody thinks they're gonna just be able to call 911 and he's gonna show up, the fire department's gonna show up. We all know that it's gonna take sometimes up to 72 hours and even longer for those people to get to you. So you need to be prepared for that amount of time. All right. And then we're gonna do some face-based preparedness and some business preparedness and continue with the adult, adult classes. I have a feeling I've gone over my ten minutes. Does anybody have any questions?
Well done.
I have a comment. Just thanks for this presentation. I always think of emergency services as reactive and you're doing all this proactive outreach that I wasn't even aware it took place. So congratulations and thanks for doing that.
So I have one more question for you guys. How many of you guys are prepared? How many of you guys have a preparedness kit at your home to take care of your families? Because I think some of you guys are gonna be responding. You might be in an EOC somewhere in that situation.
We have lots of flashlights.
How comfortable will you be if you have to leave your home and your family and they're not prepared? So if you guys would like to have a preparedness for adult presentation, let us know and we'd be glad to do that. So, thank you.
I'd love that.
Yeah.
We'll try to take you up on that offer.
All right. Do we have chocolates in the to-go bag?
Is what?
Are there chocolates in the to-go bag?
If that's something that's important to you, yes. It could be in your go-bag.
All right.
That was lovely. And you're about one-third of the way there with the children. 300, 130,000, right?
Yeah.
Almost one-third. All right. Now we have another variant. This time it's an important vote and one that we've been waiting for, for a long time. And it seems like it's taken forever and it's only been a couple of months. So Jared, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, it seems it's been a long process. I think back in September, I naively unveiled a plan, a beginning plan to get checks out by Christmas. And we learned together through some growing pains and bringing on a consultant and a program manager that it's gonna take a little more work than that and we're finally to that point. So I would like to finally move to approve Resolution 22-107, authorizing award amounts for competitive community support grants and the execution of community support grant agreements. And I'll ask for a second.
Right, seconds.
Everyone's second.
Seconds for everybody. Is there any discussion on this?
No. About time.
Just want to congratulate you and I'm getting it done. Good work. Thank you.
Well, thank you. It was a group effort though. I can't take all the credit for that.
You're the lead.
It's been, it's been a very good learning experience for all of us and I think we saw the amount of work. We started a lot of groundwork that can be used. I'd like to echo some of the comments others have made that we hope this is just the first of more to come. But we're going through our process as a committee, so we'll get there and figure out what we're gonna do with the rest of the money. But for right now, this is a very good thing and I'm very excited and proud that this is going out into the community now.
And I look forward to signing 61 or 62 grant agreements.
Wow.
You're gonna need a new pen.
It's all electronic, which is a whole different story. So we have a motion and a second and discussion is complete. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Ellen?
Ellen, I, congratulations.
Bates?
Do we have a motion in a second?
Yes, we do.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Bates, yes. Thanks for all your hard work.
Berman?
Berman, yes.
Brown?
Brown, yes.
Davist?
Davist, yes.
Ford?
Ford, yes.
Braz?
Braz, yes.
Gums?
Gums, yes.
Iqbal?
Iqbal, yes.
Kenyon?
Kenyon, yes.
Kias?
Kias, yes.
Copie?
Copie, yes.
Leonard?
Leonard, yes.
Louis?
Louis, yes.
Martin?
Martin, yes.
Molina?
Molina, yes.
Sanchez?
Sanchez, yes.
Sheppra?
Sheppra, yes.
Silva?
Silva, yes.
Strathman?
Appleby, yes.
Surges?
Surges, yes.
Teppe?
Teppe, yes.
Wallace?
Wallace, yes.
Anne Winicki?
Yes.
That passes.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. It will become a, for those of you of faith, Easter present. It'll be an Easter basket. So, well done. And this will be over a five-year period, correct?
Two years.
Two years. Okay, even better, even better. Excellent, good. Okay, so my comments. I talked a little bit about courage. And State's Attorney Moser is gonna present the procedure for this. I hear all of you that this is an interesting vote. And I know that this is a vote that some of you are struggling with because tax can be a four-letter word and what that means. But as we look at the proposals on board, none of them personally impact you. But what they do impact is all of our residents. Each one of these proposals talks about the future of Kane County, how we can make it better, how we can improve our services, how we can provide and facilitate better services for Kane County residents over a long period of time. So this can be a forever kind of opportunity for our residents. And we've heard people say that they're hesitant to take on any more burden of tax. Ours is one of the lowest taxes in the county. We know we're at 4%. And that is a flat tax. We've been a flat property tax for over 10 years. We have a four cents per gallon motor fuel tax, which has been that way for about almost 20 years, at least 16 years. There's been no increase on that. We know that our inflation rate is high. We know that we're taking a look at potential increase in compensation costs. We know that there have been significant legislation that has been passed through Springfield that our State's Attorney was recognized by the Illinois State Police Board, Board of Police, as being an outstanding champion of the Safety Act to make sure that it meets the standard and requirements our police force and our sheriff's office. And with all of those opportunities come costs. Growth is cost. So this is what this tax conversation we're having is all about. And I'll tell you a little story that happened to me here on Saturday regarding our capital improvements. And I, Ms. Bates and Ms. Allen, please forgive me because I love old buildings just like you do. I came here on Saturday to pick up some things from my office. I had a van. I wanted to move the Fauci pictures down and I had all the packing supplies with me and they're in large boxes. So I brought them in. I had my dog with me. The elevator, not like a contemporary elevator where you just move your hand and it goes back. This one, you gotta press the button. Well, as I got all these boxes in and all my materials to pack things up and to move it out, the dog decides to run out of the elevator as the elevator is closing. The leash is between the door and me. She's on the outside. So what does everybody do? Tries to jam it through. It's not stopping. The door continues to close. I don't want her leash getting stuck because you know what would happen at that point. So I went, oh my gosh, I'm gonna press the button. But in the meanwhile, as I'm pressing the button, I'm pulling her, her foot gets jammed inside of the door, the opening of the door because it's wide. She hurts herself. She's, she's yipping. I feel horrible. She's fine. But what if that were a child? What if that were a baby who decided at the last minute to run? And it was a crowded elevator and you couldn't get to the button on time to press it so the door would open. This is a wonderful old building, a wonderful old facility. But as was pointed out, this is the oldest building on all the campuses of other counties. So whether or not we look at renovation to make it safe and contemporary or we look at building new facilities, start really considering how we're gonna bring Kane County up to service a community, a service of population that really requires us to be good stewards of its money and to think about its future. Not about today, but where are we gonna be going in five years, six years and how we can benefit the residents of Kane County. I may have shared this story with you before, but I think all of us have been talking about this tax, whether they're gonna have it, what people are gonna look at it. And Ms. Silva has spoken very well about that, talking to her residents. I talked to a friend and it was random. He said, I hear about this tax and I want to tell you, I moved here to Kane County because I wanted good services. That's why I'm here. And if you can't provide good services for myself and my wife, we're gonna leave. Because they have the option to do that. So I think people come here. I came here many years ago because I wanted good schooling. I wanted exceptional schools for my children. I got it. I wanted a beautiful quality of life and I received it. I received economic opportunities by being here. I enjoy, love the forest preserves. I use them all the time. And that's paid with our taxpayers' dollars. I love the farmland. I love the open space. That's because of all of your guidance with that. I love the historical area. I love the Fox River. And how is that all maintained? By Dave Brown's vote, by his stewardship. So these are things with the courage to vote and to make good decisions, not because of now, but because of what the impact is gonna be upon the county going forward. So that's my two cents. So with that, let's talk about how we do this. Okay, and I'll turn over that to our State's Attorney who's gonna guide us through this process. Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you. So I'm going to be saving you all a PowerPoint presentation and just walking you through the process. So what we are looking at is the special county retailer's occupation tax. And again, as we've discussed before, that can be selected for only one topic and that includes public safety, public facilities, mental health, substance abuse, and transportation. And the way that the law is formed is that anytime you put this on an election, it could only be, again, one of those topics. So we wouldn't be able to do four different questions that list four different. So the first step in this process is to pick which one, if any, of those that you wanted to go forward with the special occupation tax. Again, just reminding you, this is a tax upon any person engaged in the business of selling tangible personal property. And so that is a cup of coffee. That is a purse. That is not a car. That is not groceries. That is not medication. And so you've seen presentations that have been put on by my office, especially by ASA Vincent Coyle, that described what it is for. And so this is any person who comes into Kane County or a person who lives in Kane County that purchases these items. And again, depending on the rate of which is chosen, and I'm gonna discuss that in a moment, that then goes for a percentage of the amount of money that is spent. So the first thing that this board has to do is has to pick which particular topic they would like to discuss for that resolution. Once that is picked, then a resolution is drafted and that resolution is brought before the county board for vote as to whether or not this should be put on the ballot. Amongst that, there has to be a decision as to whether or not you want it to be an advisory referendum, which means this goes to the voters and it doesn't become a binding tax at any point, or a binding referendum, which means if this is voted, then it eventually becomes a tax. The timing of everything is once the resolution has been passed by the county board, it then has to be adopted, it has to be adopted at least 79 days prior to whatever scheduled election. So if we are looking at the primary election, the primary election is June 28th, so it would have to be 79 days before that or April 10th is the day that this will have to be adopted. This question then has to be certified by the county clerk 68 days before that election or this date would be April 21st. The question would specifically be laid out on the ballot so that it is obvious to the voters. So it would say, to pay for, insert the purpose, so then again, those purposes that we had before, shall Kane County be authorized to impose an increase on its share of local sales tax by, and there is a date certain for that. Once this is passed, if it's advisory again, that doesn't mean that this tax goes into effect. that doesn't mean that this tax goes into effect. If it's binding, then it would. And so typically, the way that would happen is the following, by the following May of the year after, that's when we would submit the paperwork for it so that we would begin to collect the revenue from that by June. So that's as soon as we would receive any income as a result of that. What we specifically have to also discuss with them is that this would mean that a consumer would pay an additional and then insert amount in the sales tax for every $100 of the tangential personal property brought at retail. There have been discussions that if this is something that the county were to go forward with, we would either do this at a 0.25% or we would do this at a 0.5%. So specifically, people need to understand that it would be 50 cents for every $100 of tangible property if we did the 0.5% or it would be the 0.25%.
Jamie Shepro, does that additional explanation also have to go on the ballot?
Yes.
And as I recall, there was a case involving a fire district where it was in the wrong place and the referendum got thrown out. That question goes after the yes or no?
Yes, correct. So this is just explaining that not only do we have to ask them for permission to do it for this, for this topic, but also that they have to understand this other amount. So that is correct. So that's why I'm listing that there are two different portions of this that we have to have. So again, the, the process itself is not very difficult, but it starts with first deciding which purpose the county board would like to focus on, then drafting a resolution for that, which we already have a sample resolution that I believe has been circulated. But that can't be fully put out there yet because the purpose hasn't been decided yet. It specifically lists the questions and how the questions would be listed on the ballot. And that would then have to be adopted by this county board before the 79-day prior to the primary election, which would be April 10th. Obviously, we are now at March 22nd. So this is something that we have a shorter time limit on. Any questions of the procedure? Mr. Shepro?
A couple, let's see. So do, do we have, I thought that Vince had indicated that there was a sample resolution that had been placed on the ballot and I think a couple of other counties.
Correct. So we do have those sample resolutions, which is where we had actually drafted ours from. So if anybody is interested, I specifically have one from Kankakee County and another one from Rock Island County.
Is that something we could put up on the screen, perhaps?
Yes, I do.
Should we say why Vince is not here?
Mr. Coyle is not here. We owe him a congratulations. His, his third child?
Third child.
A little baby girl.
And when was the baby born?
I believe this past Friday. I do have a photo if anybody's interested. She is adorable. I have to give Vince's permission for that.
We all have what our kids.
Grandkids, great-grandkids.
Shepro, I spoke with Mr. Coyle before that and reminded him that the third child was entitled to the same photographic treatment as the previous two, which those of us with multiple kids needed to remind ourselves.
Didn't happen.
Madam Chair, while we're waiting, could I ask a question or bring, bring up a subject?
Absolutely.
I'm Frost speaking. You know, as we do this, you know, community outreach or, you know, explaining what we're trying to do to some, to, in this process would be great. Now, when we do the forest preserve referendums, I know there's laws against lobbying for your own referendum. And so we use the Conservation Foundation volunteers to use their time and money to send out explanation, essentially a flyer to the public. Is there thoughts of doing that somehow? Or I don't know how we could go about it, but it's just frustrating that so, so many people don't realize that only 5% of their tax dollar goes to provide all the county functions.
What we can do is to have town halls where we can just give advice. We can just share what this tax would be about and how it would work with no opinion at all. We can have, League of Women Voters can talk about this as well if they so choose to select this as a topic. So those are options that we can have. I believe we're taking a look at whether or not a survey, it would be allowed. I believe a little bit of research, we've discovered that a survey would be. And of course, a non-binding referendum will get the pulse of the voters. But if it's in a primary, you'll have just people who are signed up of either Democrats or Republicans voting in that primary. You will not have the, the wealth of opportunity to have the independent voters vote in on that. So it would be a very finite group who would be voting in at the primary.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Berman?
Well, I think a significant, Berman here, significant thing that's been pointed out to us is the number of other counties in the state that have already gone through this and have adopted a tax for one reason or another, one of the four issues that have. So I think that's significant.
And the many, and much of that has been for the public safety.
Yes.
For that, yes.
Perhaps I'm, Shepro, perhaps I'm anticipating further presentation from the State's Attorney. The language of the election code, I believe, pretty exact is that no public funds or facilities may be used for or against any public question. And this referendum would be a public question. There is, as was pointed out, the public body may engage in informational. And although sometimes some local governments may push the envelope, I believe that includes a discussion of what could happen if the referendum is not approved. I recall school districts saying, well, if this doesn't pass, we'll cut the football team. We're not telling you how to vote. Things like that. The other thing which is of moment is, is that typically, as Mr. Frost pointed out, there is an advocacy group that is not part of the governmental body if they wish to form. Sometimes there's an advocacy group saying, vote yes. And sometimes there's one saying, vote no. After the last meeting where there was some discussion about a survey, I did have a discussion, I think with ASA Nierman about this. And I think there's a feeling that a survey as such could be drafted that could be circulated by the county. An opinion poll, probably not. And the content of the survey would probably have to be reviewed so that it would not run afoul of the prohibition on political activity. I guess that's, I also had, oh, well, okay. So we have the form on the, on the screen. And I would just note that the form of the ballot, you have the proposition, you have yes or no. And then after yes or no, you have the disclosure of what the cost would be potentially for a certain amount of expenditure or something. And the reason I know about this is the Fox River Fire District had a proposition that appeared on the ballot a couple of years ago. And unfortunately, first off, it's last on the ballot. That generally, the referendums are always last on the ballot. And the second to last page had everything down to the yes or no. And then it did not, the disclaimer, the question was on a further page that you didn't know was there if you placed your X in one of the spots. And eventually, that was a basis to have a do-over. So ballot appearance will be as important because that's the only explanation that can be added. And as indicated, that language is, you don't get to tinker with the language. You have to come up with the number. And so I have one question about what was said about the what's taxed and what isn't. We've had numbers given to us as to what the estimated revenue would be. And given the long list of exemptions, things that don't apply, I guess my question to anybody that can weigh in on it is how accurate are these estimates of the revenue? I don't know that the state keeps revenue records based on that level of detail of, of product. For example, as I understand it, the cup of coffee is taxed. Prepared food is taxed, groceries are not.
Cup of coffee is taxed only if you don't have that cup of coffee inside of the restaurant.
In the restaurant.
If you take it out in a go-cup, then it becomes a taxable product.
So that strikes me as being a vast opportunity for estimates as opposed to any sort of solid figures. And I wondered if Mr. Leonard, our expert or others, could comment on how accurate those, those numbers would be.
And if I would like, I do want to answer that.
I was just going to say, I don't know, Ken, so.
Yeah, well, that was my feeling is that how do you really know?
What I'd like to do is to put that question on hold. And I do want to have another meeting pending your decisions after today. But we can actually bring Mr. Onsec in to start talking about how this potential tax, whatever rate we're at, will impact the county. I do know that the information was received from the, from the State of Illinois Tax Bureau as an estimate. And I believe that the amount at, at a quarter of a percent came to about $12,500,000 annual. Based on.
I've, I've heard that number, but Shepro again, but I just wonder where does that number come from?
And we'll be able to share that detail, but that it's premature until you decide whether or not you want to do this or not.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Leonard speaking. I'd like to ask Ms. Moser a question. If we as a board would vote no on this advisory referendum, do we have other options down the road to reconsider the referendum later on? So this isn't an all or nothing right now. Is that correct?
That's correct. You can do this before any regularly scheduled election. So before the primary, before the general, the next primary, the next general. So just voting no now doesn't mean that it's not, it cannot be re-brought back.
Thank you.
And this decision does not have to be made if you decide not to do the non-binding referendum, which I, I'm assuming that you would, would put on the primary ballot. The decision on whether or not to include this tax to move forward with it really does not have to be made until after the primary election. The only reason for that is that if you want to put it on the November ballot. So if you would like to wait and think about it and so we can bring in more information for you, more analysis, financial analysis of what this cost would be, the estimated cost we have here, but based on the budget, we can certainly explore that in the next couple of months and then bring it back to you in July. And in July, you're going to have to make a decision because again, we have that timing problem. And I believe that the same, the same dates pretty much follow through. So let's say an estimate of by August 15th, everything would have to be decided and presented to the clerk's office. Yes, Mr. Martin?
If I, this is John Martin. If I stand alone, as I say this, I'll apologize to the other 23 members on the board. But I, I have concern as I sit here that we're contemplating whether or not we want to have an advisory referendum because that's the, that's the immediate thing we're talking about here. And I, I don't, I don't feel comfortable that we have numbers in hand that we can sit and take to the electorate and say, here's how you're evaluating this. We have, we've, we've received a lot of money that yet remains unexpended in federal money. We have a lot of demands that have been handed us by the State of Illinois relative to our public safety budget. We have a lot of, a lot of things that will impact whether or not at least I, as an individual, will vote for this referendum under any circumstance. But I don't know how we can go to, I, I don't know how we can seriously consider by, what was it, April 12th? Is that our Fisher Cut bait date? By April 12th?
10th.
Well, 10th, whatever. How we can possibly have enough information in hand to, to, on an informed basis, say to the general public, we would like you to consider raising your taxes. And, and, and I'm uncomfortable with the whole process at this point because we're, if I understand the, the informal discussion of the process, we're going to vote today on whether or not to have the advisory referendum. And then in a couple of weeks, we're going to get, or have our finance, finance director explain the money to us. To me, it's, it's, the card is way, way before the horse.
If I may jump in here, I don't mean to interrupt you. The purpose of today's meeting is not to discuss whether or not you want it as an advisory because you don't even know what you're going to put up there. If you notice, number two?
I thought.
First where, the first whereas.
I thought B1 was a decision whether or not to place a referent, advisor referendum.
If we may, though, if I could finish. The first whereas clearly delineates what the topic is for that referendum. It's to support crime prevention, detention, and other public safety purposes.
So this one is the, yes, that's the Rock Island one. Can you please, Mr. Peters, this would be the one that we have drafted. Where again, everything that's in parentheses is something that we would have to add in. The date we do this on and the topic, the purpose that we choose. So this is what ours would look like.
And the insert statutory eligible purposes are the four choices that we have to talk about. Because each one of those, sir, comes with a different budget requirement. And we can't analyze what the budget impact is going to be until a choice is made of which way you would like to go.
Why?
Well, because they all require different numbers. If you want some of these, I've added the numbers of the asks. Some of them are very comfortable with a quarter of a percent. One is not.
Isn't that relevant to our decision as to which category we would choose? As to what the potential revenue is from each of those categories?
Yes.
Be for me, just speaking for myself.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, you know, I think before we would even take a position on which program we wanted to fund, what amount, we need some numbers first. We need to know what would the exact items that the sales tax increase, what would they apply to? Once we have that, I think it's very important that we have a meeting with Joe Onsec or that Joe Onsec could possibly send to all of us board members a summary of what this would entail. In other words, how much is this going to generate in additional taxes? What items are taxed? And then we can make a decision on which category or which area we want to apply that additional tax to. You know, I just think it's too early for us to make an informed decision without the information we need.
All right.
Madam Chair Bates, please?
Yes, oh, hold on a second. Just, we clarified at the last meeting what items. So I think that was pretty clear.
The sales tax items, what items are being taxed?
Yes.
I.
If you buy, if you buy this pen, it's going to get taxed.
I understand some of the items, but I want to know all of the items.
If I buy this, when we bought this orange for you to consume, or this.
And a coffee, if you take it out, you're taxed.
The tangerine, the tangerine is not going to be taxed.
We don't have a.
But how many oranges are being sold? Rate the tax.
Sir, if we, if we could have that kind of data and analysis. Sir, if we if we could have that kind of data and analysis, you know, do we count oranges? Is that our purpose? I don't think so. I really don't.
It's possible.
That that that's not our purpose. But we also know, and as I mentioned, the data is coming from the Illinois Tax Bureau. It's about 12.5 million, right?
It's our guesstimate.
For 0.25, you double it for 50. We never had a discussion of going up beyond 50 cents. Never had to have that discussion at all to go beyond 50 cents. So this one we just saw from Rock Island was $1. That was clearly defined in there, so they were getting $1 on taxable items. So we can clarify this and this discussion can be delayed. We can defer it absolutely. But if you would like me to go shopping and buy a bunch of stuff and show you what the tax would be on a receipt, I can certainly do that for you. So you have an idea, I mean, literally, the pen, you buy the pen at Office Depot, you're going to get taxed. You buy the orange at Jewel, it's tax free. If you buy a cup of coffee. Well, you have to carry it out. You can't eat the oranges in the store. Let's 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 not be facetious now. Mr. Berman.
I thought our question here is looking at the four different areas that we could expend this funds on if we had it. Now, we've gone through presentations, it appears to me, by each one of these departments, knowing, telling us what they would like to do or what they would do to meet the requirements. So we've had that information already presented to us. I think what we're doing here today to do more than anything else is decide where do we want it to go? Do we want to go transportation, mental health, public facilities or public safety? That's really what we're here for. And then if we decide that we want to do that, now should we put it out in a in a non-binding referendum? Or not? But the idea is what are we, what are we gonna, what do we feel is going to be the most important thing for us to go after?
And the presentation that was brought forward, Mr. Shepro, you said is placing a sample referendum. This is a discussion of the procedure. Not actually if you're going to be voting on it. It's a discussion of the procedure that takes place to get this on the ballot.
Wait, so you anticipate no vote today at all?
No, I am anticipating that this collective group of people will decide whether you want one of the four, two of the four, or none of the four.
Can we do two?
We can have two.
No.
Just one.
If you choose, if you choose two, Ms. Bates, then I would suggest that it goes on a non-binding referendum to let the public decide which one they have a greater interest in.
Thank you.
Okay. Over here. Yes.
Madam Chair, again, sir, just, I'm just, I'm awfully confused. While I read the agenda before coming in, I was under the assumption that at a board meeting, we were taking a vote versus at a committee of the whole, we would be having discussions. So I was anticipating a vote today.
I'm hoping for a vote today.
But I don't even know how we can have a vote if it's not, if there's not on here for a vote. So I don't, I don't know how procedurally that works. If this is just items being placed on here for discussion.
Look on the other side.
Other side of what?
The agenda.
Second page.
Item D.
Item C.
Don't feel bad, I just saw.
So if we can just clarify, what what are you looking for before we walk out of the room? Because I'm a little bit not understanding.
Let's go down to, we've had a procedure presentation, correct? Everyone is understanding. You've got dates in front of you. It's either going to be April 10th that you have to take a vote. We have to get it to the clerk by April 11th for a non-binding referendum. If you choose not to go to a non-binding referendum, you do have time. You have to make a decision in July to place it onto the ballot as a binding referendum, which I assume you'd want to do because otherwise you're going to have to wait for maybe another two years before you place it on an appropriate election cycle. You'd want to place it on a midterm or a municipal election cycle. Lower turnout. The next one will be again, the presidential election, so that'll be another two years of wait. Meanwhile, we've got the Safety Act chomping at our at our budget. So if you want to place it on the June ballot as a non-binding referendum or as a binding referendum, if you want to place it in wait and place it on the November ballot as a binding or non-binding referendum. So those those are the steps. But I would, we need to know so we can prepare because we have to prepare. So you have adequate budget numbers so that you are satisfied of what what it is that's going to be taxed. And you know exactly quantifiable, Mr. Shepro, where the tax is coming from.
Second half of my question, then.
Four, which of the four?
If item D is the consensus or the roll call vote you're looking for to even put the non-binding referendum on, I would be much more comfortable with having that and then going backwards and deciding which one it's going to be. This way we understand rather than debating for 15 hours and going department versus department, only to come down and find out, maybe we do and maybe we don't. So I just my two cents.
This is just the procedure. That's all I wanted to share with you, with the procedure, where you know you have to consider the process of it. Yes, Mr. Martin.
Madam Chair, for the reasons I gave before, discomfort with the lack of numbers, I don't, I'm not concerned about what we're taxing. Okay, that that, let's just say the 12 million is right. I I don't, if it's not right, it's going to be wrong. But it there's some, there are items that will be taxed and there will be revenue gained by the county if we do this. I don't, I cannot, I don't feel comfortable going ahead with an advisory referendum when we have a raft of questions that we're sitting here talking about today yet to be answered. And I would move that we discontinue conversation of the advisory referendum. Period. I guess that's my move is that we don't.
How many?
That we don't do, that we don't have an advisory referendum.
I'll second that motion. Shepro.
So there's no advisory referendum. Okay, if there's, but what if there's two suggested items?
Then the board will decide later.
We've got months to decide.
Yep.
Fine, fine, fine. Do we all in a consensus with that?
I agree.
Yep.
An advisory, this Kias, advisor referendum on the primary, the 28th.
Primary ballot.
So that would be out.
Yes.
That's the motion, as I understand it.
Leaving it, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Leaving it open to have a referendum on the November ballot?
That is yet to be decided.
Still an option. If we vote this down, the advisory, it's still an option to put the referendum on the general election ballot.
Yes, okay, if, all right. Let's clarify, let's clarify. If you put an advisory referendum on the November ballot.
We're not, it wouldn't be.
Don't want to do that.
This is a motion to say that the, there will be no advisory referendum on the June primary ballot.
The June 28th ballot.
That is correct.
So procedurally, there's a motion now, there's been a second for it. This would not put an advisory referendum on the primary ballot. This has nothing to do with anything in November. So now I think we have to open up that to discussion and then take a vote.
That's correct. Is there any further discussion on not putting a non-binding referendum on the June 28th ballot? Yes. Yes, Ms. Silva.
So I guess I would like to hear from my colleagues a little more as to why we would kill the advisory referendum. Because in my way of thinking, and I I completely understand where a lot of these voices are coming from. I've traditionally voted against raising taxes. It makes me nervous that folks understand that it is a referendum, that we're not actually voting to increase the tax. And so to me, in my mind, if we do away with the advisory referendum, we're taking away more power from the voters. Can somebody please explain to me their thoughts? Thank you.
I think we have one hand up.
Shepro. Well, one, I would go back to what Mr. Martin said at the outset, which is even some of the basic information we don't have now to make a decision to put it on the referendum ballot. Secondly, in the past, I, the only time I can think of the county putting an advisory referendum on the ballot was a long time ago when Mike McCoy was going to put a referendum on the ballot, whether or not to build a bridge at a particular location at the north end and announced, of course, that he would abide by the vote of the advisory referendum. The turnout was about 20%. The yes vote won like 50%, point two to 49.8. And it was decided that that wasn't really a good expression of public sentiment and it got disregarded. In this case, we would be asking the voters in theory, if I heard some of the comments, we'd list the items and say, what would you like to see? Are we then going to say whatever they say is what we're going to do? That troubles me. The primary vote is usually not very large. People don't like to vote in primaries if they're not enrolled or active party members. Typically, I think if we had a a 40% turnout, that would be huge for a primary. And I don't know, and and as I think was pointed out at one of the earlier meetings, the original purpose that was stated for why we were even looking at the idea of this tax was to plug budget holes. And some of the presentations, and I think Mr. Berman eloquently pointed this out at one of the meetings, is that we got very far afield from plugging budget holes that we were now talking about a whole series of new programs. I wonderful ideas for programs, but it seemed to me that they strayed greatly from the original purpose behind the thought of the referendum in in the first place. So a beauty contest on the ballot saying, do you want to spend money on transportation, mental health, public facilities or public safety? Just strikes me as not being helpful to the decision that we really need to make as opposed to we might want to make or programs we might want. I don't know if that helps, but that's sort of the way I look at it. And the wording of the advisory referendum itself, I don't think there's any limit if it because it's advisory. We can put all four things on the ballot. But I I just don't feel that if we don't know, I'm not sure how the voters are going to know how to, what what to make of that.
Yes, Mr. Tappy and and then.
Tappy here. Okay, Madam Chair. I'm a little bit confused about some of the process that I thought we were going to go through today. So let me just state here. I'm not in favor of an advisory referendum. It's our job to determine if we want to put a tax on the ballot. It's not our job to go and ask, should we put a tax on the ballot? Okay? I don't think there's any way that the 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 people that we represent, okay, have access and the time to go through the kinds of presentation that we have to understand, you know, the issues that we're faced with. So based upon that, I'm against an advisory referendum. Okay? Second, I I think it's been made very clear to this group, at least personally to me, that the county needs additional revenue. Okay? It needs revenue in particular for various reasons. One is is to satisfy the requirements from the state for the kinds of new rules and legislation that are required for the sheriff's office, for the state's attorney's office and the public defender's office. That's just one area. So let's put something like that on a referendum as soon as possible. Okay? If people are uncomfortable that we don't, we can't get that done by April 8th to put it on the the June ballot, then let's move ahead and and put a half percent tax increase supporting two of the ideas that had been presented to us on the November ballot. Thank you.
All right, so just clarification, please. Only one referendum is allowed on the November ballot. So you have to make a choice. You can put two as advisory or three or four as advisory. But only one vote to add, one back, one choice on in November, if that's going to be a binding. Yes.
Call for the question.
Oh, great. Done? I'm asking Ms. Molina.
We'll ask her. Ms. Molina, did you receive what you needed?
Silva, I'm sorry. Ms. Molina, are you fine?
It happens, it happens all the time. We actually have a name for it. Myrnica. It, thank you so much for that. Actually, it does, and it, and what I've heard makes a lot of sense. The only thing that I am still still unclear is to, does the advisory referendum, I understood that we decide today what what one of the four goes on the advisory referendum.
Or not, or not, or not.
Yeah.
Thank you. Or two. For instance, a selected group of people could say, we'd like two topics and we want to have those as advisory. But you only can put one if you're moving towards the November for the actual referendum. Clear, thank you.
Briefly.
I'd like.
You've got four topics to go through yet.
I just, what it is to say is that the advisory referendum form is not mandated by statute. So you could ask it a lot of different ways. You could have four que, actually, I think you can only have three advisory referenda. So you could only have three questions. But you could have up to three. You probably can't do it where you say, which of these four would you pick? Because the advisory referendums have to be a question that can be answered yes or no. I'm thinking out loud here, but.
But let's look absolutely undecided.
I think, I think, yeah, I think we have enough information right now for this.
I asked for a call for the question. Yes. Second, do we have a second?
A second, yes.
We've got a motion by Martin, second by Shepro, to have no advisory referendum question on the June 28th, 2022 primary ballot.
Okay, please, close the roll.
Okay.
Point of order, point of order, ma'am.
Yes.
Mr. Kope.
I'm sorry, this is Kope. I, please clarify on what a yes or a no vote would would infer.
A yes vote means that you support not having the non-binding referendum on the July 28th ballot, June 28th ballot. And no vote means that you would support having a non-binding referendum or several, up to three, on the June 28th ballot.
Thank you.
Could you explain that again, please, Madam Chair? Because I thought we were voting on whether or not to place a non-binding referendum on the June 28th ballot. So a yes would mean yes, put it on, a no would be no.
No. Motion was to reject
Oh, okay.
The advisory, so yes means no and no means yes.
Perfect. Yes, thank you.
We need an attorney for that.
No, we're negative.
Yes, is, yes, is no, we're not going to have the advisory.
Are we ready? Ellen? Ellen and I. Okay, Bates?
Please come back to me.
Please come back to me.
Berman?
Berman, yes.
Brown?
Brown, yes.
Davist?
Davist, yes.
Ford?
Ford, yes.
Fraz?
Fraz, yes.
Gums?
Gums, yes.
Ichpel?
Ichpel, yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Caius?
Caius, yes.
Kope?
Kope, yeah, I think.
Leonard?
Leonard, yes.
Lewis?
Lewis, yes.
Martin?
Martin, yes.
Molina? Molina?
Silva.
Sanchez?
Sanchez, yes.
Sheprowe?
Sheprowe, yes.
Silva? So I'm going to be a no on this one. Strathman? Strathman, yes. Sergeis? Tepe?
Tepe, yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Myniki?
Yes.
Bates?
No.
And that is everybody. Right? Yep, everybody. Yeah, two nays. Okay, so we are not going to have a non-binding referendum placed on the June twenty-eighth ballot. Okay, all right. I get you for another half an hour.
Motion, I seconded. I seconded.
Are you serious?
Yeah.
Yes.
You get till November, no?
Okay, all right. May I have a vote?
What's the motion, please?
Discussion to adjourn.
Just an eye, a voice vote.
Consensus, please?
Yes.
We're not going to vote, we're not, I'm sorry, we're not going to go through any of the funding requests. Everybody has a dinner date.
There is a motion on the table to adjourn. I think we should do a roll call, please.
Yeah, I request a roll call, please.
Wow. Okay, this is a roll call to adjourn. Ellen?
No.
Bates?
No.
Berman?
Yes.
Brown?
Brown, yes.
Davist?
Davist, yes.
Ford?
Ford, no.
Fraz?
Fraz, no.
Gums?
Gums, no.
Ichpel?
Ichpel, yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Caius?
Caius, no.
Kope?
Kope, no.
Leonard?
Leonard, yes.
Lewis?
Lewis, yes, knowing that we will come back and discuss all this later.
Martin?
Martin, yes.
Molina?
Molina, no, due to the fact that we asked all of our staff members to be there and present these funding requests. And now we're saying we don't, we ran out of time, so no.
Sanchez?
Sanchez, no.
Sheprowe?
Sheprowe, yes.
Silva? Silva, no. Strathman? Strathman, no. Sergeis? Tepe?
Tepe, no.
Wallace?
Wallace, yes.
Hey, Myniki?
Myniki, yes.
Twelve yays, yeses. That means twelve nos, so you're going to.
Did everybody vote?
Did everybody vote?
The chair, the chair breaks the tie.
I have the same count. Eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. You break the tie. I've never broken a tie before.
Welcome to the.
So I vote to continue the discussion.
No.
Now, that'd be a no.
Did Molina vote?
Yes, she did. She did. We had twenty-four votes, twelve and twelve. And I'd like to time it for one half an hour to be done by five-thirty. So. So we could go through, we had in-depth conversation about the four opportunities. And what I'd like to do now is to bring up the one-page overview of funding requests, starting out with transportation. Carl, you can come up if you'd like to. You can just go very quickly through this.
Yes. Good evening. You've heard already from Tom Rickert twice on this, so I'll keep it very brief tonight. You see the one-page summary of the presentation. If you remember Tom's presentations, he had a series of colorful maps showing how congestion and delay start to spread across the county right now. Basically, from Randall Road to the east, about a quarter of the county suffers from congestion and delay. And over time, by the year twenty-fifty, something like three-quarters of the county start to experience that without investing in transportation. So we have identified over a billion dollars of investment that's needed to start to address that. And of that, we have identified roughly twenty percent of where that funding would come from. So the request from transportation is really not for a specific project or even a list of projects, but that program that we anticipate to continue over that period between now and the year twenty-fifty. And then Tom, on the one pager here, we identified how we, how we start to fill that eighty percent of the funding gap. And a component of that would be the quarter percent sales tax that you're talking about here. We've identified some specific projects and corridors there in terms of capacity and safety. You see that in the, sort of the fifth section. And as you know, everything that we work on is long-term, even an individual project takes five to ten years to bring to fruition. So we know there's a direct correlation between the investment in your transportation system and the economy, meaning jobs, and also the quality of life for our constituents. So with that, I think I'll just leave my remarks there.
Okay, I think that'll be fine. And just, if I may, just a real quick little math equation that I did, and I did this for all the four. What is being asked for is approximately of, out of the four hundred and eighty-one million, one-quarter percent sales tax, it's approximately eighteen million dollars a year to help plug up the annual hole. Yes.
Fraz speaking, I would just also remind the board that, you know, in recent past budgets, transportation has tried to be a team player and the RTA sales tax that we're used to having was reallocated with the implication that if and when we ever did get a tax increase, that transportation will be made whole again. So I just want everybody to remember that, because it's been a while. You know, we kind of feel like the kid on the playground that keeps giving away his lunch money and never gets it back, so.
Has to go hungry. Yes.
Madam Chair, Sergeis here. I'm really, I need to circle back for a minute and help to refresh myself and understand. Is the purpose of the exercise the old or the new programs? Ken had mentioned, what we're trying to do is plug budget holes, and that's why we were considering this. But then in the presentations that are coming forward, a lot of this was brand-new stuff. I personally, I recant, I recall what Drew and Carl have gone through. We've taken their marbles from them and we promised to give them back. This might be a way for us to do that. I look at Jamie's and Ron's office and say, oh, my gosh, if Springfield throws one more thing at him that's not funded, this is a way to do that. So Ken boiled it down, is it to fund new programs or is it to look at old? And I've kind of lost track as to what, is there a consensus that we're trying to do and work toward or not? And maybe I'm wrong and there isn't any pre-understanding and, you know, whatever's coming at us is what we should consider. I'm just a little lost on that.
Okay, I would suggest that the only new program that is optional, and excuse me, Michael, is mental health. That is the only new program. All the other programs are pre-existing. Transportation, just talk about that. This budget is prepared ten years ahead of time. Is that correct? And we know what is going to be needed for twenty-seven years. So this is where the roads are going to have to be repaired. So yes, it's new roads, but yet it's a prepared budget, knowing for a long-term map of what's going to be happening. So yes, brand-new concrete, brand-new asphalt, but it's prepared ahead of time for long-term planning. The same thing with the state's attorney. The only one that is a brand-new program of the four is the one for mental health. Because the county has never funded mental health in the capacity that has been suggested.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Myniki.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is if we decide not to include a sunset clause. And that is something we had mentioned when we spoke about this last week. And a sunset clause, I think, would be more appealing to the residents, knowing that this tax is not going to go on for another twenty-seven years, as you said.
But I think we have, and I agree with you, and I think there, there's an option for that. Will the Safety Act ever stop? I mean, can that be sunsetted? I can't speak to that. Can mental health be sunsetted? That would be wonderful. But again, but can capital projects be sunsetted? Sure. Absolutely, absolutely, because it's a finite cost. It's a controlled cost.
Parliamentary inquiry, Madam Chair. Is a sunset clause is part of the referendum or is that a post-referendum decision?
It can be part of the referendum, but it's not necessary. The board at any time can then vote to take it away. Sometimes people will want to put a sunset clause in because it makes it more appealable to voters, that they know that there's an end limit to it.
So in our sample, it would then say something like establish a tax for a period of not to exceed or for a period of blank years.
Mr. Fraz?
Fraz speaking. You know, the sunset clause is used in cases, for example, Long Metal Bridge, which my colleague is so proud of, to sunset a project. But I mean, we're looking to fund long-term projects, perpetual, you know, police car, price of police car is not going to go down in five years. The price of a policeman, the cost of a policeman, isn't going to go down. So I really would not agree to a sunset clause.
I think, I think we need to first determine what we're going to be, choices that are going to be made. Yes, Silva.
Madam State's Attorney, did I understand you correctly when you said that it, it can be placed on the ballot for whatever reason, but then we can take it away post-vote?
No, if we put the sunset clause on there, that is what we're voting in, and then we are governed by the sunset clause. Now, if we put a sunset clause for five years in, but we decided we didn't want it after three years, we could vote to undo it.
So we can undo it in favor of the voter. I like that.
Yes.
The board could do it.
Yes.
Going that way.
Okay, ready for the next one. So remember, if this one.
The other thing I would just like to say real quickly, Madam Chair, is that I understand that the needs most, more than likely, are not going to go away. However, I am very much in favor of putting the decision back in the voters' laps in, let's say, ten years, so that they can then reevaluate, because people change their minds. Let's see what we do with this money. Are we going to be good stewards of it? The voter, the voters may decide that we have been, or they may decide that we haven't been. So that puts more ability in their lap again.
Yeah, I think.
I just, thank you, Monica. That's well said.
Yes. I don't think anyone would disagree with that. That's a viable option, without question. But if everybody could remember, we're talking now budget, eighteen million dollars potential request for transportation annually out of that quarter of percent. So that may be not quite a quarter. We may need to augment that a little bit more. So the next one is behavioral health.
Good afternoon, everyone. Michael Isaacson, Assistant Director of Community Health for the Health Department. So as was mentioned, this is for new programming. So you can't steal marbles that have never been given to us in the first place. That analogy. And I think last time we were together, there were a couple of good questions about specifics in the budget. And I know Commissioner Fraz and Commissioner Leonard asked about specific details. And I just want to clarify, my understanding of this is that there will be an advisory board that will make mental health funding. So I'm giving examples here. I did add a little more detail, but I don't want to overstep in what I'm putting forward. But what I am presenting is that this is the number one health issue in Kane County right now. So this is what our residents are saying is most important to them. We do know that there are costs that are borne by all of this, all of us, and whether those are through the courts, whether it's through hospitalizations, regardless if somebody is insured or publicly insured or uninsured, we all will bear those costs. And there's an analogy that's frequently used in public health where we, if you're standing by a river and you see people drowning, we can hire more lifeguards to save those people because we see them drowning. And our public health analogy is always, let's take a walk up the river and see why so many people are falling, falling into the river in the first place. And that's what we're at now with this. And just for comparison, DuPage County spends twenty-five million dollars a year on behavioral health. And we have only spent what we've pulled in specifically in private grants that we've been able to get. So regardless, and I understand there's, there's great dialogue here, and that's certainly your job to vote on that for meeting the budget gaps. But I think, I just want to thank you for the time to talk about this really important issue. And regardless of this vote, this is something that I hope to see more resources eventually come to. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? And the bottom-end budget line would probably be best served at a quarter of percent. Total estimated expenditure is about thirteen million dollars for public, for mental health annually. And once again, an advisory board by statute would be put together, I think of seven. And that money would be given to them to be allocated appropriately throughout the community. Yes, Mr. Sheprowe?
It's called an advisory board, but as I understand it, they make the funding decisions, not this board.
Correct. That's correct. So they would be funding sanctioned not-for-profits that provide mental health in the county. Okay?
We pick the board. Sorry, hold on.
Yes. The county picks. Yes, Mr. Kope. Or should I say the board picks the board? Mr. Kope?
Hi, thank you. Having heard Dr. Silva's testimony originally, I was struck with the amount of pure passion that she expressed. And I have to say, she was probably the only inspired. And my heart had moved in her favor. And, and to the extent that I would like to, to extend my, my own appreciation to you and our family's love goes to you. The, 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 I do have my reservations in regards to the, 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 the language of the law itself. I have read into it, not, not too extensively, since I think it's like six hundred pages. But, and then I've read articles in regards to the law. And it is met with extreme controversy about the, the equity between the actual average person who pays the tax on the street and the average business that needs to charge the tax within our communities. And whereas the, the big tech companies, the, the titans of online sales in the industry have, have massive protections in their favor. And that, those, those things, those things I'm very suspicious about. And, but as I stand today, I do, if we, if I had my druthers and I had to make a choice, I would, I would stand by Dr. Silva's side on this. And other than that, we have a lot of discussion to go through, and I do appreciate. And I do appreciate the time that we're going to spend, and I do appreciate testimony from the other departments. And it does not lessen there. I mean, I am a brick-and-mortar kind of guy. The thing about bricks and mortar is, is that the value is established, and the longevity of it goes for 100 years. And, but can you put a price on mental health? Can you put a price on human compassion? I do not want to go to my judgment, knowing and finding out that I had a choice, and that it was important at that time. So I am sticking with Dr. Silva. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. And please, correct me if I'm wrong. If you order something from an online store, whether or not that store is represented brick-and-mortar here in Kane County, if it's ordered in Kane County and sent to Kane County, this tax will be impacted on Kane County, for Kane County. And that legislation came through two years ago. So, okay, thank you very much. Capital, Roger?
All right, I'll move this a little bit. Good evening, Roger Fonstock. I'm here to talk about building management. So we have a table up there. I won't go through the details, just like the other speakers. Really, what you're looking at is two different components. One piece of this is deferred maintenance. So you have, you do have existing buildings ranging in a wide variety of ranges in different states of repair. And there's a lot of deferred maintenance and maintenance costs that go into these buildings every year. So there's, you know, an estimated $18 million in deferred maintenance. We're spending anywhere from $2 to $5 million a year just to maintain the 30 buildings that we have now. Additionally, over the years that I've been here, there's been, you know, the 2014 master plan. There's been other discussions with offices and departments about the need for space. And we provided $150 million in, you know, estimated costs for what the construction of those different spaces would look like. So you have $18 million in deferred maintenance, $150 million in proposed buildings. There's a master planning process going on right now that would basically be looking at what types of buildings and spaces are needed in the near future and long term. So you're looking about, you know, 10- to 20-year kind of horizon. What does the county look like? How big is the county? What do you need for facilities? And what do the different offices and departments need? So if you take that and you look at it over the course of, you know, 10- or 20-year types of bonds, what would the debt service be? And I think the numbers that we have up there, they're kind of small, hard to read. I'm sorry about that. But, you know, if you're looking at a shorter-term, 10 years, 3%, it's somewhere around, you know, $20 million a year. If you're looking at longer-term, you know, going 20 years at $11 million a year at 3%. But those are the kinds of numbers that you would be looking at to do debt service on, you know, $168 million in bonds to try and either repair buildings that you have and expand, or build new buildings for new needs in the future. So those are the things that we were asked to look at, if you have any.
And so we're looking at the bottom line, is that if you would like to pay off a bond at $20 million per year for 10 years, that would be 50 cents on $100. If you would like to extend that, because it would be compounded interest, additional interest payments over a period of 20 years, that would be a quarter of percentage point. And then that would be sunsetted either 10 years or 20 years respectfully. Because of the long-term bond. Yes, Mr. Fraz.
Fraz speaking. Just two comments, really, just to let everybody know, most of you know. But we are updating, White and Company is updating our master plan. So we'll update the 2014 plan, and that'll give us a lot of data to use to figure out, you know, square footage needs and things like that. And then secondly, you know, the county does have really a substantial underutilized bonding capacity. We don't carry a lot of bonds as compared to most other counties. So we're in pretty good shape if the board wanted to go in that direction.
And I believe DuPage County is doing some serious construction on its campus of repairs and new buildings totaling well over $100 million.
A campus that's way newer than ours.
I won't comment on that. The difference between our two campuses are totally different. Okay, any other questions? Thank you. Jimmy, I will let you lead this. I've put my own numbers together, but you can, you can review, please.
So, thank you. I am here to speak for all of judicial and public safety, because I'd like to point out that the public safety portion would not just be for the state's attorney's office. Now, could my numbers take all of the money? Of course they can, but really, it is all of us together. The definition of public safety purposes means crime prevention, detention, firefighting, police, medical, ambulance, or other emergency services. Together, for judicial and public safety, we all did a presentation and talked about how we needed to expand. The, one of the topics that was brought up is the disparity in pay between offices, and also the disparity in pay between our judicial and public safety and other counties who have a similar population to us. So that is something to consider, that this would be able to fund. In addition to that, and I think one of the biggest things, is the Safety Act. This is a primarily unfunded mandate. Now, we are all working together to try to see what we can do to get funding. For example, the state's attorney's office has been able to get 1.1, over $1 million, let's just say, worth of grants, just to be able to comply with the deflection portion of the Safety Act. And we'll continue to do that. But on top of that, there is a lot of additional staff that's needed, technology, buildings, and so many other items that are necessary for us to be in compliance with the Safety Act. And this is a law. This is a law that is in place now, and even more information is going to come as of January of 2023. In addition to that, there are other things that, as the criminal activity waxes and wanes, we have to look to see where we have to put our resources. One of the things that we came to discuss is that there is a great uptick in domestic violence cases, and DUI cases, and other cases that deal with substance use and mental health issues. So I commend Mr. Isaacson. He's right. The more we can get to them proactively, hopefully, the less they're in my system. With that being said, there are other cases that are increasing, our abuse and neglect cases, our physical violence to children cases, people who are taking advantage of children, people who are passing child pornography. These are things that are just increasing because of what is going on now. And as a result of that, this is funding that we're going to need throughout the entirety of our criminal justice system. I think, again, what's up on screen right now is just my portion, the judiciary, the Circa Clerk's Office, KaneCom, the Public Defenders of Office have all submitted their own numbers, and it is much closer to requesting the 0.5% than it is to the 0.25. I'm available for any questions.
And I added everything up this afternoon. For public safety and projected annual costs come to $25,834,697. So about $26 million a year, all in. That does not include, completely excludes capital. Because I do not have costs for capital. This is programmatic staff.
Excludes capital for judicial public safety.
That's correct. So that would be, if you're looking to shore up a budget hole, it's 0.50, 50 cents on $100. Yes, Mr. Sheprow.
This is maybe a question, more of a comment. I think those of us who heard the presentation at the last Judicial Public Safety Committee meeting, I think we pretty much all left with the idea that there was really only one answer to the question about what category do we pick? And that this is the category. I agree with Mr. Fraz, and that there is a need for capital for our facilities. But I also feel that the bonding, the way to go with that is to issue bonds and not pay for it out of sales tax revenue. So I don't feel that we're shortchanging that. But the fact that you can use the public safety to cover many mental health programs, it just seems to me that there's really only one choice staring us in the face, and I think that's it.
I do have a number for mental health.
$16 million.
For mental health costs, if you were just interested in excluding all others and just talk about mental health, this is just for the courts. That would include a diagnostic center, mental health court, veterans' court, drug court, JGC counseling staff, men's health, 10% inflation. $2.4 million. That's for the courts. That does not include providing money for mental health supports for those people who are not in the court systems. So that's.
Sure.
Yes.
Sir, just two comments. Before I was a board member, I had the opportunity to serve on a Friday afternoon grand jury.
Thank you, Jamie.
And I think it's, so oftentimes, we compartmentalize ourselves. We get into our silos. When we come here, it's all about numbers. But when you go sit in a Friday afternoon grand jury, you see the worst of the worst. And all of this no longer is numbers. It's about doing what's right by the community. And if you haven't had that experience, it's a worthwhile experience. Additionally, if any one of my fellow commissioners hasn't taken time to go down to the Health Department in Aurora and walk the building, and you think this building's old? Go down to that one, and then tell your friends you're a commissioner that represents this building. So I'm not here to advocate for a tax or not a tax. I'm here to say, if you're unaware, open your eyes, drive over, go with... Michael, I love you, man. Go for a tour with Michael Isaacson and look around. And make sure you understand some of the realities we're discussing, and some of the priorities that we'll be looking at. That's all I got.
Add to that, when you go knocking on doors, if you so choose, over the next few months. And you have an example like I had, walking in North Aurora, where a man comes out of his house and says, "How can you help me? I have a son who has developmental disabilities. I'm 80 years old. My son is 50. I'm going to be dying pretty soon, and where is this boy going to go?" And what do you do? I remember that so clearly. Or being chased down by somebody who's saying, "My son suffers from manic depressive disorder, and my wife and I are terrified of living in our home. I can't talk to you because he's just driven up, and we're afraid right now. Please help us." I mean, these are real-life things when you go out knocking and talking on doors. So these, you're right. Thank you for sharing that.
And the point, I mean, the point is, these are realities, and it's not just numbers, and I get that. And I want my fellow board members to understand that, too. It's, some of the priorities and some of the decisions we have to make truly have consequences, and we should be aware of those as we're evaluating.
So those are the four. So now, the next question is to narrow down the selection. We have, Mr. Sheprow said that he feels, as perhaps many of you do, that public safety is the one that should be supported. But what do you think? Is that the one that we would like to go with? Would you like, I would like for you, I can make a recommendation, just to narrow it down to two. Because I know you want budget numbers, you want more careful analysis, and we can bring that down, because it's going to be a lot of quantifiable work to be able to bring those to you. And if there's two that you think is capital, suggested already, that that could be better funded differently. If transportation, if with the increase of the RTA sales tax back fully made whole, that could help them out, do additional funding so that they can shore up that $18 million that they're needing on an annual basis to make sure our roads are well-prepared for the future, for future use. That could possibly be.
What is the deadline or the urgency if we don't have the advisory going on the June ballot? Is there a deadline there?
Well.
I'm not understanding.
There is, there's a soft deadline, a soft deadline. Because if we want to start the process of speaking with our constituents about this one or two issues, if you wanted to start talking about what the budget is going to be, what that could look like, those are all careful conversations I'd like to have together as we start planning. Because next year's budget can, I mean, you'll have many options. You can, an option to include this tax to help support, let's say, judicial public safety, because we know for a fact, we've heard an estimate. I suppose that when they put in their budget numbers, the sum of this is going to be included, if not all of it, for '23. So you're going to have some deficit there. Then we also know that capital probably, you know, we need some help here in these buildings. So what's that's going to cost? So I'd want to make sure that both revenue and, if you're going to increase property tax or not. I'm even going to talk about gas tax right now, because of the price of gasoline. But are you interested in increasing property tax or not? Or if you're interested in moving this forward or not? And that's all going to be dependent on these budget scenarios. So if we prepare all four, it's going to be challenging, because each one is a little unique on how we fund it and what budget presentation we're going to present to you.
Kope, please.
So, yes, Mr. Kope, and then Mr. Sheprow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If we were to consider choosing two items, would, I would prefer that we wouldn't be bound to to a scenario to where we are advocating a referendum at that point. There's been a lot of discussion already about not knowing what the i's and t's are that are associated with the language and ideals. And I would, I would, I would support coming to an end in regards to what projects we would consider if we weren't bound by them immediately. Thank you.
Mr. Sheprow?
It seems to me that we, I hope we're not going to make that decision today.
What, narrowing it down to two?
Right. You know, under our next steps, C2, what questions need to be answered to narrow the selection? And I think we posed a number of them today. I think, for example, we ought to look toward intermediate steps to determine what we need to do to our facilities, and to do the bond projections and revenue that we need to do that, independent of any other decision we make. If everything falls apart, it's going to be difficult to function, and I think that case was made. But I don't believe that that should be part of the sales tax referendum, but it is nevertheless, I think, a critical decision that needs to be moved forward. We've had a lot of detailed info about public safety, the needs. Some are still unanswered questions. There, again, I think if we're deciding, and I think the state's attorney indicated, that we might be closer... that we might be closer to a half cent instead of a quarter cent if in fact we believe we need to do all of those things. I think we then need to actually have specific numbers broken down. Right now, we've got a lot of estimates. The estimates add up to a lot. I think that would be a next step. The extent to which, if we do this, how much can we use or would be available for mental health funding? And I, the transportation, I think, is a compelling need. In my mind, it's not an immediate mandate. That doesn't mean we shouldn't consider it or include it, but I think that's also part of the discussion. You know, needs, wants, and mandates, and they're not, there's overlap, they're not all the same. So I I think personally, we've had a lot to think about. More questions are going to come up, and I I don't see how we can decide that today.
Thank you. And I I've heard, actually, I've heard two areas of interest for you and two you dismissed. That was public safety and mental health. That's what I heard.
See, I I wouldn't, I would, I would subsume mental health into the discussion of public safety.
Okay, all right. So, Ms. Silva.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would be in favor of that because what I hear is that we're discussing ideology and what I hear my colleagues saying is that they want to have as much information as possible. So when they take back to their constituency, it it is more an objective presentation with facts. And I think if we provide each other with these numbers and these facts, I think we ensure better success. Because, again, I really understand the ideology of that people, folks, want to know what's being done with their money and that we're providing them with reasons, very human reasons. And I think the good people of Kane County have great hearts, are very kind folks. And if we provide enough information, because I know I I serve folks in my district who have told me, we don't want tax increases. So I need to go back and I need to be able to say to them, this is how we've best crafted the opportunity to pay for these very substantial needs, but still allow you to maintain control. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Martin.
I guess I'm really going back to my, the first comment I made in the meeting, and that is that we need to, we need to look at the fundamental numbers. You know, we're having this conversation here under the presumption that we're trying to decide what we're going to deal with, a quarter or a half. We may get nothing, but we may, we, that may be nothing. And the first thing we need to do, in my mind, is to say, what's our budget going to look like? What are our sources of money going to look like? Because we still have to pay for public safety. We still have to do all these things. And my starting point, before I can look at anything, is I want to know what happens if we don't, yet if this referendum doesn't pass, I want to know what our budget's going to look like. And if you want to have something to to educate taxpayers, we need to know how bad the situation's going to be among this group of twenty-four, or we can't do that. So we need to say, we need to have the starting point be, this isn't going to pass, and here's how short we're going to be on balancing our budget for next year. And that, to me, is 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 the, is is a condition precedent to making valid decisions on how we move ahead.
And I would concur with that. I certainly would not argue with good logic. However, what if we were to take a look at bonding? Are you interested in a ten-year bond or twenty-year bond? Because those scenarios are going to be different. Are you looking at eighteen million dollars a year additional costs for transportation to make them whole? Do you want a scenario, sir, on each one of those, on what that's going to be looking like?
Yes. What we know among the group is we have mandatory obligations in the public safety sector. And to be practical about this, I would like to, I would join with Mr. Shepper and saying, at least for the time being, let's, let's look at that and recognize it as the real deal and see how we're going to fund it, A, if this doesn't pass, and B, how much it's going to take to do that. Fine, meld it into public health or to mental health and everything else. But we can, we don't have a, we don't have an option. All we can do with the mandates are time, time the incurring of the obligation, depending upon how long, you know, when they go into effect.
So you concur that perhaps our research should be best focused at this juncture on public safety and mental health.
Well, that's, that's the absolute that we have to look at next year in our budget. We have to deal with.
Yes, hold on, Ms. Bates. We have a couple of other hands up. Yes.
I apologize. I I have to exit the meeting. I got a community group from my district meeting at my house in fifteen minutes. So I have to leave. But I I do, you know, you probably see Carl and I squirming in our seats, you know. When the budget was the hot issue, transportation was there, promises were made. And I think those promises should be kept. So in my book, the question should be transportation and what else. So, thank you.
Transportation. All right. So, Ms. Bates.
Thank you. I'm going to agree with Mr. Shepper. Somebody can cheer or something. But especially because public mandate is, public safety is the mandate. And it seems to include many mental health programs. So mental health is probably closest to my heart and public safety is unavoidable. So I I'd like to put my, my brothers on public safety because it's going to include mental health.
All right. So the time is getting long. And I also have to get someplace by six o'clock. Should we agree by consensus for this next leg of this discussion that we will be focusing on, excuse me, Carl, I'm a fan, but should we focus on the mandate that has been set forth by the state due to the Safety Act to focus the next budget allocation to public health? And I'm sorry. It was, it was a fur dance. Mental health and public safety.
Madam Chair Gumps.
Yes, Ms. Gumps.
Hi there. I I've been listening to this wonderful conversation, and obviously I've always got a lot of opinions. I would suggest that the longer we have these discussions, the less people we're going to actually be able to affect. So I would support public safety and mental health. And I think we need to get a role on it. I think it has to happen. The longer we delay this, the less, you know, the more people are hurting. In fact, I had a conversation with another board member today about another suicide. And what we need to do is be cognizant of what the county residents have told us already. They've told us that mental health is their number one concern. And how can we affect that in the best way? And that is obviously the debate here. Is it public safety which can touch all of those things? Is it mental health? But that's, that's the direction I would like to go in. But the the residents have told us already.
So are you asking, are you asking to call the question?
Yes.
No question.
Is there a question?
Motion to adjourn.
No motion?
Looking for consensus?
I would, I would prefer consensus at this point rather than roll call. Yes, Mr. Kope.
I do, I do concede. So to to the consensus, yes.
So do we have a consensus then for our next conversation to focus on public safety and mental health?
But not mental health as a separate standalone.
Not, not, not standalone. That's exactly correct. Molina, Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Molina, absolutely. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate the time and effort everybody's placed tonight. I would, I would request that we just focus on the public safety aspect. The public safety aspect is going to umbrella mental health, just to kind of keep it clear with what our, our ask is going to be of our staff. That would be my ask, keeping it under the public safety realm where mental health is part of that, under that umbrella.
All right. Well, that's, I, I think we all agree with that. All right, consensus, yes, to public safety?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
I think we arrived at what I said was a reason for being here, and that was to decide on which, which of the four we're going to support. So I go for adjournment.
I'll second again.
Well done. Well, I really sincerely, well done.